Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, July 7th, 2015. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice.
I'd like to request a moment of silence so we can reflect on our duties as employees of the town and also for the safe return of our soldiers both overseas and in the United States. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General laws, I have to announce that this meeting is being recorded by the Esso Metal Cable Access and also by the Selectmen's Office and have to ask if anyone else is recording the meeting here. Seeing none, we can proceed. Before we get to the items at hand, what I'd like to do is I'd like to introduce and welcome Greg Moyer, who is our new interim town administrator. He's just literally got out of the car from Oklahoma and he's ready to do some good things for us and Lorraine might even be able to see four o'clock once in a while. Welcome, Greg. We have no one listed for the public forum tonight, so we will go ahead. Well, it's actually 5:45 anyway, so we'll go ahead with our first appointment, which is our town accountant Sarah Minard.
Hello again.
And you are here for some year-end accounting issues?
Yes.
Now, let's elaborate.
So, the first thing that I would like to discuss is some reserve fund transfer requests as part of the cleanup. These were approved at the appropriations committee meetings, and so now I'm presenting them to the Board of Selectmen for your approval so that then I may do these transfers. So, the first item is for the waste collection department. It's for garbage removal, and the request is for $2,873.89. What occurred this year, per some discussions with Bob Parent, is that they did some metals revenue that they received this year that offsets some of the expense, so they would like to do a reserve fund transfer in order to offset that expense. Since we can't move the revenue directly, we can move the reserve, and so that's what this request is for.
Okay. All right. Any questions regarding? I'd like to make, propose a motion to accept this reserve fund transfer request. I'll second on necessity. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye. Can we sign it right now?
Yes, please. Thank you.
You can explain the other one.
Yes. All right. And the next one is for the Charter Commission. They came to appropriations asking for $25,000. They did submit a budget with that, and it's primarily for their consultant. And so, they requested it out of the 2015 reserve fund. They currently already have $5,000, which was provided per statute, and so this would complete for their entire budget of $30,000. Any questions?
Who's the, who's the get consultant for that?
I'm not sure.
May I speak?
Sure.
Dawn Starks, Chair of the Charter Commission. We have selected the Collins Center, which is a quasi-public agency. It was set up to help towns develop charters and write charters, because obviously a charter is a fairly intricate legal document, and we felt we needed some help with both writing it and the contract that we have gotten is not just to write the contract, but to help guide us through our process. We do the work, but they know the structure to get us from point A to point B. And to be quite honest, without that, I think it could be difficult for us to go through and properly do it, and we want to do it the right way.
Yeah. Do you know any other towns they've done it for, huh?
Yes. We checked out their references. We went through and I spoke to two references myself, and we've got another reference to whom someone else spoke. All of them said they felt that they could not have completed the process without them and had very high regard for their processes and their people. I have also been, over the past week, in constant contact with them in anticipation of working with them, and they seem very easy to work with, and they have a real bank of knowledge from which they can draw, which I think will really benefit our town.
Do you know what towns they were, or?
There is a whole list of towns. I can speak off the top of my head. I spoke to the Chair of the Charter Commission in, the name is going out of my head, Pittsfield. And he spoke highly and said that they came in and guided. Also, in the town of Gardner, I spoke to the Mayor of Gardner, and again, said that it was very well done. Eric Madison betted out another place, and all I can, I can't remember exactly which town it was, but the same thing came back, almost verbatim. We couldn't imagine doing it without their guidance in terms of just the process. They don't make the decisions. That is definitely the commission's purview, like the process.
I'd like to propose a motion to accept the reserve fund transfer of $25,000 for the Charter Commission. I'll second on necessity. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Then the last reserve fund transfer request is to take the remaining amount of the reserve fund and fund part of the snow and ice deficit. So, as you all know, this year was a very rough winter, so our snow and ice went severely over budget. A portion of that has been approved in the FY16 budget to be raised and appropriated, but the remaining amount still needs funding. So, this would prove to move $206,741.39, which is the remaining amount in the reserve fund, in order to cover that snow and ice deficit. The deficit is currently two, that's not covered by the fiscal '16 budget, is $226,680.40. So, that leaves an unfunded balance of about $19,009.
Any questions? All right. I'd like to propose a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer request for $206,741.39. I'll second on a necessity. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Now, the next area that I'd like to talk about is year-end cleanup with departments in the general fund, so Fund A1. So, per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, with the approval of appropriations and the Board of Selectmen, I am able to move money from one department to another or from salary to non-salary if it is within certain guidelines. Those guidelines are 3% of the department that I'm moving it from or $5,000, whichever is greater. I'm allowed to do so in the months of May, June, and the first 15 days of the new fiscal year. So, that's why I'm here tonight, so then we can move it before the 15th. So, what I'd like to propose is that the first option for a department that has a deficit is if the, if I can have money from within its own department. So, for instance, if a department overspent in non-salary but had some extra in salary, I would first want to move from that own department to itself. If there is not enough money to therefore then still cover the deficit, then I would move to some of the other departments that we have an excess in. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through what departments have a deficit. I'm going to tell you what the amount is as of right now. Please keep in mind that these amounts do include the encumbrances. So, I would like the vote to be that I can move the money, not the exact dollar amount, just in case an invoice comes in and it's 50 cents off. I don't want to have a 50 cent deficit or something like that. So, if that's agreeable, then I'll continue. Okay? All right. So, the first department is the Board of Selectmen Department, and it currently has a deficit in non-salary of $416.19. That deficit is primarily as a result of the annual report coming in a little bit more expensive than what had been budgeted. There is enough money in the salary aspect of the Board of Selectmen Department in order to cover that difference. I don't know, do you want to vote for each one as we go down?
Or we just wait till the end, and if we have any questions as we go through, but if not, we'll just vote on the whole package.
Sure. The next department is the Accounting Department. It has a deficit of $334.73 in the non-salary, and that is due to the purchase of new office furniture for the town accountant to have a desk with four legs instead of three and not needing a wall to balance.
If we had known you wanted this one, we would have.
I know. There is enough money in the salary aspect due to the fact that we had one month with no town accountant, so we do have extra within the department. The next is the Treasurer Department, and that is $1,435.10, excuse me, and one cent. And that is primarily due to postage. You know, you can't always control all of that. Now, within its own department, I do have enough in the salary in order to cover that in totality. The next is the Legal Department. Legal has a deficit of $40,416.10. Some of the drivers of this are the collective bargaining arrangements that have been done, so we've had extra bills due to that. There has been some arbitration this year, and then there has also been a change in the process with how frequently labor, legal counsel is used. The next is the Licensing Registration Department, and that has a deficit of $3,809.71. This is primarily due to printing for the extra ballots and also the police detail that was done. I do not have enough in that department, but I do have enough in the Treasurer Department. Since the Treasurer controls both departments, I could keep it within the same department The next one is the Planning Department. It has a deficit of $2,197.72 in the salary budget, and this is due to, I believe, instructions that were given last year for how to budget and that whether to decrease hours or whatnot. So, the employee still did work and has received payment. The next is the Police Department. It has a deficit of $62,146.98 in the salary, and that is due to overtime. I believe the overtime is primarily because of the retirements that have occurred, and so then they have to have people do overtime to cover that shift while they're in training. And then there was also the one gentleman who was away on a military leave, and so therefore they had to still cover those shifts. The next department is the Building Inspector. It has a deficit of $1,243.17. This is due, $465.95 of it is salary, and that is for part-time salary. That is for the part-time inspectors that we have, and then the remaining amount is due to office supplies and in-state mileage. The mileage was very high this year compared to past years. I do not have enough in anywhere to cover that, within itself, excuse me.
Do you have any percentage on there? How much of there?
How much percent?
Mileage?
Compared to prior years, no. Compared to budget, it's about $400 higher than budgeted, but I didn't do a comparison because this mileage includes all of the inspectors who don't receive a statement.
Oh, that includes all inspectors? Okay.
Mm-hmm. Yep. So, the next one is the Waste Department, but as you've already approved the reserve fund transfer, I won't continue talking about that one. The next is the Health Department, and it is over $998.50 in the salary line, and that's due to the hiring of an individual at a much higher rate than was originally budgeted. I do have enough money within the non-salary in order to cover that. Next is the Council on Aging for $346.91. That's primarily due to some unexpected expenses. So, for instance, one of their TVs that the seniors use broke unexpectedly, had to, you know, have a specialist come in, and that, that's the majority of that bill. The next is the Veterans Department. That is over $1,425.28 in the salary, and that's due to the fact that we belong as a group for our veterans. One of the members of the group left, and so therefore our percentage increased, which we obviously could not have anticipated and budgeted for. I do have enough money in the non-salary portion to cover that. The next is the Celebrations/Cultural/Historical Department, and it is over $679.52. The primary drivers for this are oil and gas. As you know, it's a very, very cold winter, so the cost of it.
I thought it was next call away, Greg.
Nope. And then the last, the last one is the Workers' Comp Compensation Department, and that is over However, we did receive, so we use the carrier Maya, and Maya, we get rebates, policy premium rebates and things like that back. And we did just receive one back in the liability insurance for $42,000. So, I do have enough in there to cover it. So, it's both, you know, insurance policies, it's just which, which one.
Which policy, yeah.
That's all. So, the departments now that I have some extra in that I would propose initially taking from would be the Liability Insurance Department, which has $35,799. The Veterans Department, which has $11,815, which includes after I subtract out that salary amount. The Health Department, which has $22,252. Again, that's after I took out the shortage. Utilities, we did very well this year for our utilities. We have an extra $69,014 for our utilities. So, it was a good year for, for how they budgeted. As you know, utilities can fluctuate significantly. And then, we also do have some extra in the construction and maintenance and the admin highway for DPW. When you combine the two, it's about $73,000, and, you know, that shifts all the time. So, I would like to have approval to move for each of those departments that we went over, and then any remaining amount that I might have as extra to cover the remaining amount of the snow and ice deficit, which as I said, was $19,009.39 and one penny.
Okay. I'd like to propose a motion to do what she said. I'll second on a necessity. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you very much.
All right. And I noticed that our third board member is here, so I'm going to propose a two-minute recess. I'll second on necessity. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. All right, we're back in session. Our next appointment is Blake Haskell, J.B. Hunter, Inc. Is there any YRC feasibility?
Hi, I'm actually Michael Gardner from Long Meadow Group.
Hey, Mike. Billy Goomin.
Nice to meet you. I'm Greg Correll.
Nice to meet you.
Hi, Angela Thor.
Nice to meet you.
Actually.
How are you? Good evening. How are you? Blake Haskell.
Nice to meet you.
Billy Goomin.
Billy, how are you?
I apologize for the.
No, I was just in the hair.
Oh, sorry. If you'd like to put it on the overhead, I have a USB, or we can just do it the old-fashioned way, whatever you.
It's, I see now our IT director was here and he got this all set up when he left.
So, we'll do it the old-fashioned way then.
I know that computer is set up to this, which is set up to that, so I don't know if you want to do the USB, but we can do it either way.
Do you have a USB?
No, we'll just do it the old-fashioned way.
Whatever you want. Just might be easier for our viewers, though.
Okay.
One of you may have to run the controls, and somebody can.
I'll just sit over there. And I'll move over here.
You have the music stop.
Yes. Sure. Haven't blown up anything in a week. It's toasty here.
I'm not used to that thing.
Yeah. It's been day like this.
Yeah, I know.
Will you shut up?
Really? It was on.
I thought it was on.
Well, we're looking like we can handle this new technology already. Shutting stuff off, that's supposed to be on.
It's feel like it's going to be a good night. It's going to work. She never say anything until it's on. Sure, I spit myself. Well, while we're waiting, my name is Blake Haskell with the Correll Group, and with me is Greg Correll, who's the principal of the Correll Group, and with him is Mike Gardner, who's on our team. We have a few members who are not here this evening because of scheduling and vacations and whatnot, but I think we can show you what we've done. Greg is an architect based in Hopkinton with a specialty in public safety facilities throughout New England. He's a former member of the Mass Architect Access Board, and he's very familiar with public construction projects throughout the Commonwealth. Mike is an attorney, and he's a Personnel and Labor Relations Attorney, has over 40 years' experience. He was the Personnel Director for the City of Boston Police Department and as well as the retired Director of Labor Relations for the City of Cambridge. Also on our team is Chick Langone and Norm Boucher, who couldn't be here tonight and have a lot of experience in public safety communications. And what we, what we did was we were hired by the Town of Longmeadow, acting on your behalf, Ludlow, Hampton, Wilbraham, and Longmeadow, to do a technology and feasibility study for a regional communication center. We examined three locations in our process that was, were offered by the towns, and we spent a considerable amount of time visiting with town officials, state officials, vendors, other regional emergency communications staff, and various professionals in 911. We've studied the legal and labor relations issues, the technology issues, and we've discussed many alternatives, which we'll get into tonight. 911 services is evolving from somebody sitting in the basement of a police department answering phone calls, dispatching the ambulance and the fire trucks and the police cars, and it really has evolved, and one of our members who's not here has a great analogy with.
If you just click on that X, I can't.
This X up here?
Yeah.
Oh, look at that. Cool. Thank you. You're hired. And the 911 is evolving where you're getting away from the one-man operations, because if you have a medical emergency, you want to stay with the caller, provide assistance until the first responders arrive, and that's very difficult with a one-man show because of the proliferation of cell phones, where you'll have a single car accident, you may get 10 or 12 calls, and if you have one person, they can't deal with it efficiently, and you end up having slow service, and the goal here is to improve services. There are some advantages and disadvantages of this, and we're going to go into those in a, in a minute. There are various ways that a regional communication center can be started. You can have, by state law, you can have two towns, or you can have as many as you want. We have some models here to discuss with you. We're proposing a five-town regional center, which we think will be the most cost-effective for the towns and improve service at the same time. We did look into some governance and administrative issues, and Mike has a great presentation on a newly enacted state law that provides a considerable amount of benefits to the town in the design, implementation, and operation of a regional center. We do have some deficiencies in all the towns, including your town, and we'll go through those, and then we're going to touch a little bit on some of the costs involved so that you have a better understanding of where we are. One of the key drivers in 911 services is called next-generation 911. Some of you may remember 911 from many years ago, which was just a simple telephone basically, to back in the 90s, the state got together and provided enhanced 911, which provided some number locating, location services. That is evolving, and it's come to the next-generation 911, and that is in the works on the state level. They've got a $100 million contract out, and they are picking some smaller towns to participate. Wilbraham actually has been selected. Their equipment is a little bit older and needs to be upgraded, and so the upgrade will be the next-generation 911. And there are changes in laws, changes in rules, changes in procedures, and we're going to touch on those a little bit, but one of the key components of this is training, and the state has mandates on training, and in Longmeadow, the police department, East Longmeadow, excuse me, the police department handled the calls, and then the EMD is performed by an ambulance service. I think they're in Chica Peak. I've not been able to pin down Jeff exactly where it is. So, there are, there are a lot of changes coming, and Captain Stankowitz is here, and he's been our point person for the five towns, interim chief Stankowitz, I should say. And when we were at the 911 Commission meeting, the Director of 911, we introduced the captain to them, and they are very excited about having this rec come to fruition because it's the first rec under the NG 911 and the new way of doing things in the western part of the state, so they're very, very happy with that. One of the components that we'll get into more detail is equipment and technology, and on page five, you see a pretty broad list of some of the equipment and technology required, and as part of this project, some of this, most of this, all of this equipment will be provided as part of the grant, so there's a lot of capital avoidance on the part of the town, which in these days of budgets, that's always good news. Mike Gardner is going to take over now, and Mike is a very seasoned professional, and I think you'll enjoy his discussion.
Thanks, Blake. So, you know, there are a couple of reasons why you might want to do this. One is because you might save money by regionalizing and getting more grant money from the Commonwealth. Another reason is because it gives the opportunity by pooling the resources to allow for a greater professionalization of the dispatching.
which, in these days of budgets, that's always good news. Mike Gardner is going to take over now, and Mike is a very seasoned professional, and I think you'll enjoy his discussion.
Thanks, Blake. So, you know, there are a couple of reasons why you might want to do this. One is because you might save money by regionalizing and getting more grant money from the Commonwealth. Another reason is because it gives the opportunity, by pooling the resources, to allow for a greater professionalization of the dispatching personnel and community, provide for dedicated supervisors and managers for the function. Currently, you have essentially about twenty part-time dispatchers, who spend twenty-five percent of their work tours typically doing this function, each of them performing about sixty-one shifts a year, plus or minus given vacation and overtime arrangements. That doesn't necessarily give them all of the practice or the opportunities to develop the skills in the use of now complicated equipment, and equipment that is going to become more complicated and sophisticated as time goes on. Doesn't give them the same opportunity to master that equipment as persons who, for whom this is essentially a career. And a career with career ladders and growth opportunities in terms of going into supervision and management, things that really don't exist in the smaller one-town operations. You also have the advantage of having typically five people on the floor at any one time, generally four dispatchers and a supervisor, who would be a working supervisor, able to be at a station and take on some of the load. So if there are crisis events or a number of simultaneous events piling up, you have the advantage of having people who, having more people to handle the peak load. You are not faced with the limitations and liabilities of a one-person operation. Should that person get sick, suddenly incapacitated, then you are down until somebody knows that's happened and can do the replacement. You also have better situational awareness. So if there's a complicated event going on and a fire department needs a mutual aid call, well, in this regional room, they know where the other fire departments are now assigned. If somebody else is out on a call or not, they can go to the most logical department to call in that circumstance. Something that either a police officer or civilian operating by him or herself in a single room with only a one-town perspective has no chance to do. So we think that the best way to provide the best 911 and emergency medical dispatch capacity to the citizens of this town and to the other towns is to regionalize and professionalize the operation. That is not to say that we think there are any, you know, critical deficiencies in your operation. I mean, the primary issues are, you have a cadre of essentially part-time staff doing it, for whom it may not be the most interesting piece of work that they've got. And you have got the liability of a one-person operation. The way we have, and we'll talk about the money matters in a few minutes, if that's all right. We were asked to look at a number of different ways to configure a regional ECC or a rec. Greg will talk a little bit more about some of the possibilities in terms of space that we've seen so far. But we think we've, in at least one of the sites we've identified as a possibility, we could have as many as seven towns participating. And, you know, there are procedures to allow additional towns to come in over time. There are also other possibilities. Should you or some of the other communities, in fact, decide you are not interested to do a four-three or even a two-town rec. I think an important point on page seven, town participation is fluid. The planning process may add or delete towns, and there's flexibility. One of the nice things about the new way the statutes allow you to look at this and plan for it, you don't have to buy all in at once. You can make an initial commitment to continue to explore it, and then, in the end, you get a final opportunity to say yes or no. Because your circumstances are so different from the other towns in terms of having a completely sworn function now, I think that we would recommend that that's the first thing you all have to decide. And we'd suggest you need to decide whether there's a possibility that you would, in fact, go to a civilian model before you decided to sign on for any further planning.
Is, if you don't know, is that a, would that be a requirement, or is that just a suggestion?
No, that's a suggestion. You know, I think it comes in part from thinking about if the communities start to plan it, and they think it's going to be a five-town rec, and then partway through, it turns out that it's really going to be a four-town or a three-town rec, that's a whole lot of additional planning that has to happen. And so we're just suggesting you all should really be thinking about whether that's a step you are prepared to take, or at least seriously contemplate. There are substantial construction grants to support either the building of a new rec center or the renovation of existing space. Typically, the Commonwealth allocates about eight million dollars a year to these kinds of rec construction projects. You don't, most likely don't get all of the money upfront, but you might get two million dollars to start, two million the next year, and another two million the year after that, assuming that overall costs are in the area of six million. The, two other things to emphasize about the money before Greg talks about the building space. You currently get grants from the Commonwealth to subsidize your training and your operations. Right now, the training money mostly goes for overtime to pay the twenty police officers to attend the sixteen hours of training that's required every year. The operational money is generally substantially increased if you have a rec, up to two-hundred or four-hundred percent of what you used to get. And if you take cellphone 911 calls, which are now about seventy percent of all 911 calls, you get a substantial increase in the subsidy, because the subsidy is based in part on call volumes. And right now, we don't think a single town could actually take over the cell 911 calls, just in terms of the volumes and the overload and the peak period problems that would exist in a one- or even two-person operation. But combined, and with careful planning and phased implementation, we think that a larger rec could, in fact, do that. And we think that's a good thing, because the calls, right now, the calls go to the Northampton State Police Facility. They talk to the person, then they transfer the person to the local community. When they are medical issues, those delays can be very important and/or any other kind of public safety question. On page nine, here's just an example of three recs, which show that the, in Essex County, the Shoba Valley and the South Shore rec, the grant money, for instance, in the South Shore, moved from about one-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand to almost two-thirds of a million, or six-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars, or over a four-hundred percent increase in the subsidy for operational purposes. That's completely separate from the construction problems or construction costs. You know, we can't predict how much of an increase you might get, but in fact, the state has a goal of more recs. They have the incentive to put more recs together and to help pay for them.
Greg? We looked at the feasibility, of course, of having a regionalization of dispatching. The operational issues, the personnel issues, the impact on your existing operations and how that's going to work. But we needed to get something that would give us a snapshot of what this thing would probably cost. At least in terms, at least to an order of magnitude, something that we could work with. And something that would kind of identify the, at least in general terms, the scope of the project. We looked at a couple of different sites that were given to us as part of the mission of the study. And the Greenwood Center in Longmeadow turned out to be the most advantageous of the three that we looked at. There were police stations in Wilbraham and Hampton, which weren't going to work. The existing space there for renovation, and this would be a renovation, is about nine thousand square feet, and it's space that's well-suited to renovation. It's a robust building. It's in a good location. It's kind of off the beaten path, where you don't want a facility like this exposed to the public. You don't want it on a major thoroughfare for security reasons. Lots of parking, fairly hardened building. It would be very difficult to drive a vehicle into it to take it down. As I said, it's a sturdy Masonry building. Certainly needs a lot of work. And its interior layout is conducive to this kind of renovation. It's got the gym, which would make an ideal renovated space for a dispatch floor. And we think we could probably get up to maybe nine stations in there, if we had to. There's offices that flank that space for supervisor, training officer, those sorts of people, administrative staff. There's space down below, in the lower part of the drawing, for staff support spaces, namely locker rooms, maybe a little break room, a place, if you're manning this thing twenty-four-seven, a place where the staff could have, if you will, their quarters. On the upper right-hand side of the drawing are the technology support. That big list of equipment that you saw, that we had before, is all supported by a tremendous amount of hardware that needs a place to live, a conditioned space. And on the far left-hand side of the drawing, there's a classroom. An ideal space for, as we were talking about, is, you know, training and the like is a very, very key component to a regionalized dispatch center, because that's really one of the pivotal differences between individual dispatching on a per-station basis versus a regional situation. As I said, it's about nine thousand square feet, or eight thousand square feet. Nine is sticking in my head, because there's some news going around from a previous presentation that we made, we saw it in the paper. It is not ninety thousand square feet. It is eight or nine. That's been published, and that's incorrect.
Greg, not to interrupt you, but I don't see, do you have evidence room there?
There's no evidence storage here.
They won't?
No, this is strictly communications and alarm systems. You wouldn't be, it's not a police station. So there's not a...
So before they brought up someone there, they would grab the evidence and keep it at their own station?
They don't bring anybody there. This is strictly a call center.
Strictly.
All they're doing is handling calls.
Yeah, this is just...
Shifting them out to the various departments.
No holding cells, no evidence area, no really police administration or fire administration. There are video links to the police and fire stations. There can be video links to other key areas, facilities within the community. But this is the place where the calls come in and the dispatching goes out. And each town maintains their own local control over all of their police operations, with the exception that it's going to be somebody from the rec who is going to be doing the dispatching. Now, of course, a local supervisor can always override what the dispatchers are suggesting, if that's what they want, and give updated information to the center. But it doesn't have any law enforcement or fire suppression responsibilities other than the communications.
Strictly.
Yeah.
Strictly communications.
He wasn't there.
Yeah, he was.
Did you go to Fort Devens?
To Fort Devens?
No, I wasn't up there, but I thought they did.
Devens is actually a good example.
Yeah.
How that works.
Interesting facility.
Very interesting.
The spillover, again, it's not policing, but, you know, business calls and those sorts of things would be handled through the center as well. But again, it's strictly communication. The next page is a summary of the costs. And I should preface this, and I'm sure we'll get into that in just a few minutes. But all of these costs are subsidized costs. None of this is coming out of the town's funds. This is all being paid for through the state. Maybe paid for over a period of years, as you develop the project. You know, two million dollars at a time for development, for design, for construction, for outfitting. But we're looking at an eight-thousand-square-foot facility similar to this, basically a renovation. We think you can do it for around three-point-three million dollars. The soft costs are around two-point-four, and that includes all of that equipment that you saw on a few sheets ago. That includes dispatch consoles, communications equipment, radios, computer aided dispatch, a lot of sophisticated stuff, including the interactive video that would probably, you would have going to your police station lobby as well, so that folks that were at the police station, in the event you don't have a dispatcher, need an interactive somebody to talk to when they arrive at the police station. And that would be covered through this. And it's not just an intercom with a button. It is someone you're talking to on a screen. That would be, of course, dispatching, you know, an officer to the station to deal with them. So we're looking at a total project cost of around five and a half, between five and a half and six million dollars for this scope of work. The, as Greg just mentioned about the video links, a lot of times, you'll have a station that may not be manned, and you can create a safe lobby, so that if someone is in trouble, they can step inside, pick up the phone, the camera comes on, they speak to the dispatcher, and the door locks behind them, so a person is saved. So as happens now, a police officer would be dispatched and handle the incident, medical emergency, the same thing. And it's all electronic and goes over the network.
Yeah, because that was one of the things we were discussing, being concerned about, is still having someone at the station in the event that someone walked in off the street. And this seems like it answers, you know, answers that question, is if they're able to pick up a phone and see someone and talk to them about whatever their situation is, it at least gives them, it gives them the ability to do that as opposed to coming in and not having anybody there.
Yep. The video monitoring will be very helpful in facilities like this, where the person entering the field of the camera would put an alert up, and the dispatch center, the rec, would have monitors, and that would pop up, so somebody would be aware. So there is security, an added bonus of security at this facility for the other towns.
So the next page is relatively complicated set of spreadsheets. The numbers, of course, are very specific. That's part of the tyranny of Excel. You know, you should think about, you should round these numbers off. But basically, we think your current operation costs a little over a half-a-million dollars a year, essentially taking one-fourth of your police capacity and dedicating it to dispatch. You get some subsidy grants from the state, so we think you net out in the area of about four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars as the cost that you're putting into dispatch by having the police officers. We think that your contributions to the rec, if you follow the recommendations which we're making, which are that each town's proportionate share of the overall operating budget would be based on a fifty percent population factor and a fifty percent call volume factor, then your costs to the rec after subsidy would... your costs to the rec after subsidy would range from $370,000 to $240,000, you know, just depending on how much of a subsidy you got from the Commonwealth. That doesn't include any additional subsidies that might come if you started taking your own cell 911 calls. In the middle of this page where it says be lobby window staffing estimated costs, we said, well, if you've got any civilian capacity in the department now, clerical or other civilians who can handle walk-ins during the day, you don't have to cover that. You could hire part-time staff to extend the hours into the evening, either five days a week, six days a week, or seven days a week, for relatively small increments of money. If you went with 24-hours, seven-day-a-week staffing of the department with civilian help, that would, of course, cost a lot more money, and you'd have some issues about making sure they in fact had work to do besides being there to handle walk-ins. The, at the Devens facility, some of the towns have gone to so-called dark station after 7:00 PM. That is, there's not a presence dedicated to being in the building after 7 o'clock at night. They cover the hours after the regular civilian staff would go home with other part-time staff. One of the towns is using a reserve police officer to do that function. And again, you've got the capacity to have the grant pay for a secure lobby arrangement with the video links. And so somebody can be buzzed into a secure station if, for instance, they feel they're being harassed or abused, they want to get in, that kind of thing. Now, but of course, for you, the $470,000 you are now paying with the, taking the grants into account, or the over half a million dollars that in fact is coming out of your budget for the police staff, isn't a savings you can recoup, unlike the other towns who presumably would not be having their civilian dispatchers working for them anymore. Unless you made the decision to, over time, reduce the size of the department, the sworn force in the department, to say they were not, they were no longer doing this function. Or the alternative way to think about it is that if you were in a rec and you didn't change the size of the police force, you could in essence increase your on-street patrols by 50%, that is, from typically two to typically three. For relatively cheap marginal additional money. Because it's not like adding five new police officers with their salaries and benefits packages. It is taking five who are now inside, moving them outside, and then putting the new money into the civilian rec, the regional center. So, and, you know, so that's a very complicated decision for you all to think of, and, you know, one in which we, I think we can only say, you know, this is what you're looking at, which is different from what the other four towns are looking at, for the most part. Long Meadow has a sort of mixed system where they have police officers filling in on a spot basis during the day and on some periods. We also would be remiss if on page 13, we didn't talk to you about some of the challenges or disadvantages. You know, if you're going to form a rec, you absolutely have to have a good leader or director for the center. Very much of the success of the center is going to rise or fall on how good that person is. We think there are a cadre of experienced people out there, so it isn't an impossible task to recruit and retain somebody who's very good and capable. But you have to be careful and make sure that you don't blow that decision. And talk a little bit about the decision-making process in a minute. You have to check and see if there's some functions that are now done at the police department or the fire department that would be stranded, that dispatchers now do, that somebody else is going to have to do. You know, the answering of the business lines is not one of those. The rec would take over the business call answering, which is by a pretty substantial factor greater than your actual 911 load.
One of the, excuse me, one of the towns in the Neshoba rec relocated the chief's secretary from the back of the building near the chief into the room that housed the dispatchers. So they killed two birds with one stone. The window is fixed, is manned during normal business hours. And we don't have any peg counts, but a very large proportion of the calls or visits are during daytime hours. You do have people who work in the day, can't get there in the evening, some on the overnight, but that's so small compared. So that was one of the tricks that they pulled off. And the other thing I found out this afternoon is there are several towns involved in recs. Holden is one where they are converting from law enforcement sworn personnel to civilian. And Chicopee and West Springfield are in the process of doing that as well. So there is some momentum and there are some cost savings associated with that.
So, again, depending on what happens to the size of your police force over time, you know, this might all be new money to you, or there might be a savings, or you might be able to buy at a discounted price more police on-street coverage. There's the issue about possible loss of control. We think that the proposed rec governance structure, which in the end is in the control of the towns, can and should provide for substantial public safety input into operational decisions. And I think that, you know, the rec ends up being essentially a service function to the public safety community of the participating towns, police and fire. And it's, and I think that their interests are substantially the same in terms of making sure that the towns feel well-served and that their calls get answered correctly, quickly, and that the dispatch is informed and appropriate and professional. Some people worry about the loss of dispatcher local geographic knowledge. You know, I'm here by the big Y. You know, well, we think over time that these dispatchers are going to, if not know all of the nuances and details about geographic locations in East Long Meadow. They're going to learn the major ones, and they are going to have on their screens, you know, visible indicators of where the call is coming from. Here, I think that the loss of jobs, you know, is a potential issue. In some of the towns, there's a mix of full-time and part-time staff. You know, the 911 dispatcher community is not so large that the people who are currently in the jobs are not going to be prime candidates for the new rec. Some people may not want to go. There'll be some kind of drop-off. We are not, we don't recommend that you just say, everybody's guaranteed a job. There should be screening and a real effort at skills upgrade. Here, I think, you know, it's a little bit different, given the way you do the sworn, use of the sworn staff. In terms of uncertain costs in the future, the good news about that is that the funds that pay for the operating subsidies and pay for the construction subsidies are dedicated outside of the regular revenue stream of the Commonwealth. Those monies for those grants that you receive come from surcharges on individual citizen 91, I'm sorry, cellphone bills. So currently 75 cents a month goes to the, for every cellphone bill in the Commonwealth, goes into the Commonwealth for the purpose of improving the 911 dispatch. That is scheduled, or I think it did go up July 1st of this year, to $1.25 a month, mostly to pay for the next-gen implementation. And then at some point, it is scheduled to ratchet back down to $1 a month. But it's different than the kind of budget crises that the Commonwealth faced in 2008 and '09, when sales tax and income tax revenues were dropping precipitously because the, I think the cellphones are here to stay and are probably impervious to fluctuations in the economy. And it's, you know, as of now, it's your money, you know. Obviously, the Commonwealth could always change that in the future, but I think you're in a much better position to have that dedicated revenue stream. So on page 14, we just highlight some things I think we've already said. Because you rely so much on sworn officers to do the dispatch function now, you have two transitions. You have to go to civilians, and then you have to go to a regional center. You know, that's a bigger change than is faced by any of the other towns. I think, you know, we have some experience with moving from sworn to civilian. While I was in Cambridge, it was a mixed system. There were police officers sitting side by side civilians. When we put a combined police and fire dispatch center together, the police left and stopped doing the function. It went reasonably well. You know, nobody lost their jobs because of it. And I think, in fact, for the most part, the police officers were happy not to be doing that work. So because you have such a big hurdle there, you know, whether it's psychological or just a lot of complicated considerations, we would really caution you to, I guess, not participate unless you think there's some realistic possibility that in fact you might do this. If, you know, being, if, if not, if not being willing to civilianize and deal with whatever sort of disruptions that causes within the police department, either in terms of budget impact or staffing questions, you know, it'd be better, we think, for the planning process, better for you probably, if you were in a position to just decide, not to make a commitment to anything, but to decide, yes, I'm in fact open to this, or I'm really not so open to this at this time. You know, the other things you might do, you could consider trying to have full-time dispatchers by making the dispatch assignment a permanent one for members of the force, as opposed to just doing the rotation. You know, advantages to that include the fact you get people who, because they're doing it all the time, it's a full-time job, they get to learn the equipment better, they hopefully are, become committed to it, and their skills grow. You know, a disadvantage is if, you know, who's going to get those jobs? Is it a punishment duty thing? Well, that's not a good situation. Is it the least senior? You know, that may or may not work. Are there in fact people in the department who are motivated enough that they want to do it and it would be a good fit for them? Another thing that you might do as a sort of half-step is to try to experiment with moving to a mixed system to begin with, so that you bring some civilians in. On some shifts, you've got the three cars out on the street, not two, because you've got a civilian inside. Or you, and you just try to see if a taste of that fits for you, which it might or might not. And then, just on page 15, you know, if you decided to participate in the rec for maybe a half a million dollars, I'm sorry, a quarter of a million dollars, you could buy an additional officer on the street on every shift. That's pretty cheap to do that. So the, the next steps are, after you decide whether you are interested in continuing the planning process or not, if you are, then you would vote to accept the provisions of chapter 500 of the Acts of 2014, which simply amends a chapter of the general laws. We have some text for you to consider as a motion if you wanted to do that, which, again, you might check with town council because we think this works, but, you know, it's up to you. It's a legal decision for you all. And if you vote to accept that, then what you do is appoint three people, and the chair of the board makes the appointment of three people to a planning committee who would work with the other members of the planning committee from the other participating towns to actually come up with a long, complicated, and detailed district agreement, which in fact would be the rules of the road, the regulations that would provide for the governance structure for the rec, the appointing authority, details for the rec, the advisory roles for the public safety personnel, the role of a treasurer in terms of responsibility for budgeting, the rules for getting into the rec, rules for getting out of the rec if, after a certain amount of time, you decide it's not for you. And then, and then the cost-sharing provisions in terms of, you know, is it going to be equal, same amount of money for each town? Here, given Hamden is a possible participant, it just seems like that's really unworkable in terms of the differentials. Some places have done it, some places have done it that way. Everybody shares equally. You can do it based on population. You could do it on call volume. We suggest that the way to blend it all and smooth it out in the best way is 50% population, 50% call volume. But that ends up being a decision that the planning committee puts into an agreement. And then that agreement is submitted to each of the boards of selectmen for an up or down vote as to whether or not, given, these are the very specifics of how this rec is going to run, where it's located, all of those details. Are we in or out? And, you know, if somebody decides they're out, that might veto the whole thing. Or it's possible then that the communities that are still interested could regroup, do a redo the budget, you know, look and see if the space is still viable in terms of the costs for the space on an ongoing basis, the operational costs, and try again. And, you know, that's all of that. So one town's dropping out doesn't necessarily kill it, but of course makes it a lot harder.
Could be a four-town rec. On the other hand, the invitation goes out. It could be a six-town rec or seven-town rec. You could invite other people in to participate. And again, rework your bylaws, your arrangement to accommodate that.
So we have a typo on the last page. There's a place where it says "the appoint," and it should say "to appoint." That was my responsibility, and so we've given you corrected language.
You're a lawyer too, aren't you?
Yeah, and I have a tick about writing "to" when I, or "the" when I mean "to." So we spent an awful lot of time talking, and we appreciate the opportunity, also your flexibility about scheduling us in today.
Thank you too, because I know we've tried to bounce you around a few times. We thought we were going to have police candidate interviews tonight, and that ended up being postponed. So we thank you for being flexible also.
Any questions?
Yes. A heck of a five of them, actually.
Through the board.
Go ahead, Craig.
I'd like to ask you a question, Greg. You said there were three sites you looked at, but you thought Long Meadow was a more feasible one?
I'll turn that to over to Greg.
Yeah, could you tell me what sites and why you think Long Meadow's more feasible?
Let me, first of all, the sites that we were given to look at were, I think, generated as part of the invitation to do the study. And people sat down and said, what are the possible places we might be able to put this? And let's have them study. It wasn't something...
So we didn't look at, we didn't pick them?
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't explore sites to see what was going... We didn't, we didn't, we didn't explore sites to see what was gonna work best. The three sites we looked at, one was the-
Hampton Post Office? Yeah, Hampton Police Station.
Hampton Police Station and the Wilberham Police Station, both of which were in various stages of design and pre-construction. So the logic was that if these buildings were sort of underway, maybe this would be a good opportunity to expand them and include this facility in them as part of new construction. As it turned out, in both cases, especially the case in Hampton, there, there really wasn't enough space on the site to accommodate, you know, eight thousand square feet of rec space. In, there were some other problems in Wilberham, more what I would consider safety or security issues. They're just, they're just across the, the river from the gas, the gas storage building. Then they've got that, the gas storage tank facility. And then they have that rail, railroad that's right behind them. And who knows, you know, what's, what's being transported. And when you're doing a rec, when you're doing something that you're relying, a whole, a whole region is relying on their, on their communication safety, to have those kinds of potential hazards close by that could, that could take them out was a concern. So, Wilberham was, was pretty much rejected for that. And at the same time, both of these projects were well-advanced in terms of design. They were going out to bid to, to, to stop that, to, to pull back and redesign and include a rec would have really meant eliminating those projects as they were moving forward. They, they wouldn't have gotten built. And I don't think, I don't think the sentiment in either of those towns was, was to stop their projects.
What made you choose Long Meadow? I mean, or not you, but what made them be, because they get an existing building right now?
Well, it was, as I, as I said, the, the building itself that we were looking at. And there were, there were problems. I mean, there's going, there would be relocation of, of folks that were there. I mean, it's being used as kind of, as a community center now, so there'd be, you know, the, the classes and the, and the community, things that were going on there. The gym would obviously have to be relocated or find, you know, new facilities for that. But the building itself was well-suited to this kind of renovation. It was a good building. It was big enough, it was, it was sturdy enough, it was in good enough shape.
Place for a radio tower?
Good place for a radio tower, lots of parking, good, good geographic location. So there, a number of things that, of the three possibilities, it was far and away the, the best.
Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's the only place that can be looked at, because, you know, there would be a new planning process. I mean, to the extent that the, the effort goes into additional site location, you know, that's money, and so that might set you back a little bit. But, you know, I think nobody's, nobody's committed to say it can only be at that school.
Absolutely not. In fact, the idea is, is that when this moves to the next stage, I expect that we'll be looking at different sites, different buildings. But we know, kind of in the back of our, our head, that we need about eight thousand square feet and we need a building, if we're gonna do a renovation, that's at least as, at least has some of those, those strengths that we found at, at the Greenwood Center.
So have you thought about doing a new building?
I was just gonna say that.
Could. That's, that's, that is certainly on the table. It would be, be a bit more expensive, and if we had to, yes, we could.
And we're not completely clear about this, but we don't think that the state grant would allow for the purchase of land. So that, that's not completely clear. The, the rec itself can buy land. One of the things that a rec can do is bond for larger capital costs. But we don't think that the Commonwealth will support the purchase of land in a grant. That's something that needs to be checked more thoroughly.
If I may, I'm gonna try to do this in order. Have, there been other towns that have gone from sworn officers right to a rec without any, because we seem to be the anomaly of the five towns that we're discussing here, and I just wanna, I just wanna see where we, where we fit into this, because I noticed you had East, well, I know you're open to other areas, but I noticed you had East Long Meadow sharing in a five-town rec. But earlier in your, in your presentation, you said the facility that you've selected so far will, will only, will entertain four towns.
Oh, no, seven. Sorry, it's, between four and seven is what we meant to say.
It says up to a four-town rec would fit into the proposed facility.
Right. A seven-town rec would fit into it, a four-town rec would fit into it. We're not sure a three-town rec would fit into it.
Okay. I'm just going by what it says.
Yeah, it's inartfully drafted then.
Okay.
What we meant was, we didn't think necessarily that if it was just three towns, that there would be, that that'd be enough.
Page seven. If you wanna change it.
No, it's, it's, it's up to four, you know, not less than four.
Right. What I'm saying is, we're, if we're one of five and there's only, and it's up to four in this building, then somebody's gonna be left out, so I didn't know if it was-
No, no.
And it sounded like it would be us, because we're the only, we're the only apple in the orange crate, you know?
We think this place, that there'd be enough capacity, particularly on the gymnasium floor, to have enough consoles to handle as many as seven towns.
Okay. And, and if it would happen that we went to a mixed civilian and sworn dispatch to start, that would not preclude us from joining at a later date?
That's right.
Okay.
Well, the rec, you know, the rec would have rules about how to get in. I mean, my expectation is that every rec would like to grow, and every rec would like to do a better job of serving a broader community. So, you know, there'd be details about, you know, what it takes to get in, but I don't think that, you, 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 no matter what you do, you'd be well-served if there were a rec in the area for you to have an alternative to look at.
I will find out the names of the towns that have transitioned from sworn to civilian.
Okay, thank you.
I know Chickapie and West Springfield are in the process. One of the towns in the Holden rec, and I don't know which one, has also, and there are some other examples of it.
And if you could find some that have gone from sworn to rec and skipped the civilian part, that would be helpful, though. Just so we know, I, I mean, I know, I've been talking to our police chief in the past. I know he's, it's the, and you've got it in here, it's the losing control thing that he's afraid of, because he says, once you lose, you don't get it back, so.
I was very involved in the beginning of the South Shore rec down in Hingham. And it was an amazing process where the police and fire services got together and butted heads and-
Ours would never do that.
Yeah, yelled and screamed at each other, but they came to terms with what are the calls. It boiled down to, if you start an engine, that's a call. One town doesn't go after cats and trees, all the towns did. So they, they unified that. And that can happen here, so that all the towns have similar calls, police and fire, and they're all united and everything is done very efficiently. And as Mike said earlier, the situational awareness that you get is absolutely mind-boggling that when you have it in, in Hingham, ambulances from Norwell go right through Hingham on the way back from the South Shore Hospital. And they have enough trust with each other that the Hingham now dispatches the Norwell or Cohasset ambulance into Hingham, because they know they're near there. And it saves the shoot time for getting the guys out of the houses in Hingham. So it just will build to that sort of familiar.
Okay. Thank you.
My understanding, just a point of clarification for myself. My understanding, once you were in, you had to stay in. But during your presentation, you mentioned that you could go out, come in, whatever.
So, yeah, so, I mean, I think that, that this is an issue which the planning committee would have to grapple with. I think we would recommend, you know, a minimum of a two or three-year notice time in terms of getting out. I think that South Shore rec has a one-year notice or the first, the beginning of the first fiscal year, that is at least a year after notice, is the, are the terms that they came up with. I think, you know, we, we believe that it's too hard to ask any community to say, you know, I'm getting married and I've got absolutely no chance of divorce. But we also think that the terms for the divorce should be pretty clear and that the timeline or notice component should be pretty long in terms of being able to serve the best interests of the whole rec.
Yeah, because it also gives the other members time, because obviously their, their participation will increase if someone should drop out, so.
Well, one of the, the considerations this planning committee would have is you're putting together five unique organizations. They have to find the common ground, and it's gonna take a couple of years to do that. As part of the financial incentives from the state, and these are going to increase, I believe, because the state really wants to go to regionalization, if, if, if town X decided to leave, it affects the other towns, because the percentage of grant monies available will be reduced. When the five towns sign on board, all of their monies go to the rec, they will not come into the town anymore. So there are some financial incentives. And as these centers are created, what will happen is a set of data will be created over the next two or three years of operation, so that you can find whom, perhaps it needs to be a seventy percent population, thirty percent calls, or the other way. And the only way to do that is to look at the data that you're producing as part of the rec. And that will, that will make those financial-type decisions much easier.
Through the board, these, these are not twenty-four hour call centers?
Twenty-four, seven.
Twenty-four, seven.
They're twenty-four, seven.
One of the, the big advantages here is some towns have a single person on duty on the overnight hours. When you have an auto accident, you've got multiple calls, it's crazy. Towns are now mandated to provide emergency medical dispatch, and that's really hard to do when you're trying to dispatch the firemen, firefighters, excuse me, versus telling someone how to do CPR. Having multiple people on duty, you have the ability to dedicate someone until the first responder gets there and hangs up the phone, so you know that there's care and service being provided. Towns will never make money on this. This is not a profit-loss center. This is an increase in services. And it's, the, the research is in, the state is really pushing hard on regionalization. There are a lot of administrative reasons, there are also a lot of technical reasons, but the underlying reason is improvement in providing emergency services.
And just understand all of our options. You said we don't have to buy into it all at once. What's the minimum that we have to buy in?
What, the, the first level of commitment is to agree to accept chapter five hundred and appoint three members to the planning committee. And I would say that, that probably involves real staff time. In, in this phase, I think we had a twenty-four plus or twenty-four-person advisory committee working with us. But we really did most of the work, you know, they gave us data and information and would react to it. In the future, you can apply for grants to, to get more planning money, including the hiring of consultants, should you choose to. But really, the consultant role should be more facilitative than what we did in this process, because it's, the decisions have to be made by your group, and your group has to hash them out and be satisfied with them. So if you decide to participate, you know, you'll be having some reasonably substantial amount of staff time for somebody, for three people going forward in this. And, you know, sometimes it's, it's a representative from police and representatives from, from fire, representative from the town who's got a somewhat broader picture, including the, the total financial structure, as possibilities, people who, who might be logical to be appointed to a committee. But that's, I'd say that's the big commitment, up until the point that you get a fifty pages long, twenty-five pages long, not sure.
That all the towns agree on?
That, that everybody says yes to.
The town attorneys.
Yeah.
Well, one of the-
But, excuse me for a minute, but of course, what that really means is that there's a negotiation process going on. You know, the, the, your three members, the three members you appoint from your committee are presumably not going to be agreeing to things that they don't think are acceptable to you.
Right.
A priori, you know, and so that's, hopefully what you get is not a surprise. It's all been fleshed out.
One of the recommendations we made was the hiring of a director of the center, because this person can lead the towns, do quite a bit of the staff work, has the technical and administrative skills, personnel skills necessary to begin this process. And this is a living, breathing organism that you're creating, and it's gonna go through change. And having somebody step in early would alleviate a lot of those concerns and can take the five towns down the road. And there are, there are people out there that would be qualified for this type of position.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Yeah, do you know any town, what, you said West Springfield?
West Springfield and Chickap-
How long did it take them for the process?
I believe it's in process now. I don't know if it's been, been finished. I called the state nine-one-one office this afternoon and spoke to the coordinator for recs, and off the top of her head, she told me one of the towns in Holden has gone from sworn to civilian. So I will follow up with her tomorrow and I'll send you a note about what town, so that you can speak directly with them.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say that in, in competition for grant money, one of the advantages that the Hampton County rec has going for it is that you have the study done and you have a lot of the legwork and a lot of the structure already in place, which kind of gives you a leg up on a lot of the competition for the, for the grant money right now. You're, you're ahead of, you're ahead of the pack, so.
It's a good thing.
Yeah, it is a good thing.
And, and we expect that grants are, the, the grant process is going to open up in September, is that right?
Yeah, September and probably award by, hopefully, January.
So we're under the gun as usual?
Well, we, you know-
I hate doing these things where they, where they tell you, you gotta do it by a deadline, make a decision like that.
It's more getting in line first than anything else, rather than under the gun, you know, there's-
The, the state has put a tremendous amount of resources into the surcharge increase, to the point where normally they would award, announce grants in April or May and award by July one. Because they're short-staffed, they delayed that process and they hope to get the announcements out in September, return November, and hopefully announcements in the first part of January, which gives the towns a little bit of breathing. It's not a hurry. And I remember, I know Captain Stankowitz was pushing and pushing and pushing, because there was a, a, a April fif- March thirty-first deadline, which evaporated by the state, so we, we got a little reprieve. But there is a, a fair amount of time, and as Greg said, you're, you're down, you're down, you're out of the starting blocks by having this study done. And the state is very interested in having one of these created in Western Mass, so there's a lot of visibility at the state level. And my understanding of having worked on several of these projects is, once you get into, into line and you're in the grant process, the money will come. And it comes out of the surcharge, it doesn't come out of the state funds, which means there's a little bit more stability. And I know in other states, there, there have been wholesale raids on the nine-one-one funds. California's a great example. They have no money for nine-one-one, because they built bridges. Massachusetts, what I call the trust fund is sacrosanct. The governors can't touch it. So the money is there, the money is gonna continue to come in. It's a dollar and a quarter for a year to help fund NG nine-one-one, and it stabilizes at a dollar. And then it, in two years, the state has to go back and justify the dollar versus the seventy-five. So it's, it's a living, breathing organism.
Before we let you go, just like you asked, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but did, if you don't have any questions, that's fine.
I don't have any questions. I, I, they said, what kind of my concern was, it's not a true savings for the town of East Long Meadow. It is getting some more patrolmen on the street. And the expertise and the professionalism that a dedicated dispatcher provides, and I've, I've been there before, when the calls have come in, the nine-one-one calls have come in for car accidents or house fires, or, you know, who knows what the police department goes to. It's, it's hectic, and having multiple people there to do it, I, I think, is, is a value add- It's hectic, and having multiple people there to do it, I think, is a value added for the residents of town in East Long Meadow. So you're not going to see it as a cost savings. I just think you're going to get...
Right. It's the other way around. You're going to get more people on the street as opposed to...
Right, you're going to get more service for the town.
Right. He's got to get us. He put it better than I did. All right. Very good.
Well, if you'd like to work on this motion, I'd be happy to go sit over there and vote and pay for it.
We've got a few people to run it by first, but...
But thank you for the offering.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
We're going to table item six. Moving along. Item seven, we have a request from a Skyhawk soccer camp from 6311 East Mountain, Spokane Park Drive, Lea, Washington. To hold summer camps for the weeks of July 13th to 17th, 2015, two sessions, 9:00 AM to noon, and 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and August 3rd, 2015, 9:00 AM to noon, at the East Long Meadow High School Field, 180 Maple Street. Camp application approved by Lois Lunowitz, temporary health agent, pending camp inspection by Lois Lunowitz, temporary health agent. I'd like to propose a motion to approve the soccer camp. Obviously, she can't do the camp inspection until it starts or until it's ready to start, so I'd like to make that, or propose that motion pending her inspection of the camp at the time that they start.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A request from St. Michael's Knights of Columbus, 9960, for a one-day liquor license, all alcohol, for Sunday, August 16th, 2015, from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM, and also an entertainment to be held at St. Michael's Community Center, 53 Summers Road, in conjunction with a golf tournament dinner. Insurance is on file. I'd like to make a motion to approve the soccer camp. Obviously, she can't do the camp inspection until it starts or until it's ready to start, so I'd like to make that, or propose that motion pending her inspection of the camp at the time that they start.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Again, we're receiving stuff last minute where we can't say no, even if we wanted to. I just think that needs to be a practice and needs to stop.
Yeah, and we're addressing that, Angela, because I talked with Lois today about that.
Okay.
You've got to come to an end these last-minute things, you know. Like you say, the only reason we passed it was because the kids were already coming, you know?
Right.
But...
Now, do we check, do these people that are coming in, are they going through quarries? Are they just renting our space?
Well, I got a little problem with that today because they, the camp thought the rec department was doing it.
Oh, no.
And when some of the kids came, Lois went out there and they didn't, you know, go through the registration and stuff the way they're supposed to. So we're going to go out there, you know, they already started the camp, but we got another camp starting next week.
Right.
That we're going to address.
And we don't have another meeting before that next camp starts, and this is the same thing they did before.
Well, we got that next camp is doing what they're supposed to. It was this first camp that we had a problem with.
Oh, okay. So the camp that's come out is all set?
Yeah.
And all of their staff has been quarried, et cetera?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. A request from St. Michael's Knights of Columbus, 9960, for a one-day liquor license, all alcohol, for Sunday, August 16th, 2015, from 4:30 PM to 8:00 PM, and also an entertainment to be held at St. Michael's Community Center, 53 Summers Road, in conjunction with a golf tournament dinner. Insurance is on file. I'd like to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license and the entertainment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Recreation commission, there's a letter of interest from, and I'm going to butcher this name, but I don't know if it's Marinal Molly, M.D., to be put on the rec commission, and there's also a recommendation letter from the rec commission to approve this person as a new member of the rec commission. So I'd like to, since it's okay with them, I'd like to propose a motion to accept Dr. Marinal, not Molly, as a member of the rec commission.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Board of Health?
Resignation letter.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm looking at the wrong one. Yeah, we have a resignation letter from, yeah, thank you. We have a resignation letter from Janice and Karu from the Historic Commission, effective July 1st, 2015. Lorraine, if we could send a letter to her thanking her for her participation, and I'm sure they'll be coming to us looking for a replacement once.
Have it.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Now, Board of Health.
You get this in.
What's that?
The superintendent's...
Oh, okay. I'm doing great tonight. The superintendent of schools, we have an update on current information on the statement of interest for East Long Meadow High School as far as their proposed presentation to the state for a potential new high school. They got there last year, there was an audit done on them by an independent group, and the basis of the audit was, basically academically, the high school is doing very well, but facilities-wise, there's some items lacking there. So all they're notifying us of is that they're taking this audit that was done and sending it forward to the state to be part of their package, along with their request for, to be considered for a new high school. All right. Now, Board of Health.
Not Board of Health.
I know it could come eventually.
The only thing we have for the Board of Health right going on right now, we have the Lois Health Inspector going out, finding out where there's places that have never been inspected in East Long Meadow. As recently as today, when I talked to her, we got a problem up at one of the places. So we're getting on top of these, but she only works 18 hours a week, so it makes it a little difficult until we get a permanent one, which now that we got, you know, the permanent guy taking Nick's place, we can start addressing this with Lorraine. The new business for the Board of Health, 2015 Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day is Saturday, September 12th, 2015, from 9:00 to 1:00 PM at Minichog Regional High School, 621 Main Street in Wilberham. And it's by appointment only in the selectman's office. So I guess you have to call here to make an appointment for the hazardous waste. That's, you know, paint and different things you can bring there. To get a list of it, you can call the selectman's office and we'll give you a list. And that's all they get for that.
Okay. Before we go to Town Council, if you don't mind reading the meeting's invitations and reminders.
Our next Board of Selectment meeting will be on Tuesday, July 21st, at 6:00 PM in the Town Hall Hearing Room. Invitations for the PVPC Regional Transportation Plan Meeting for the local elected officials will be on Thursday, July 23rd, and that'll be at 7:00 PM. And that's at 60 Congress Street, first floor in Springfield, Mass. National Night Out is Tuesday, August 4th, and that'll be from 5:00 PM to 7:30. And that's at the East Long Meadow High School parking lot located at 180 Maple Street in East Long Meadow, Mass.
Okay. Town Council? Yes, sir?
I just had a question. I don't know if you want to talk on some of those, I can wait out.
Go ahead.
About number six.
Yeah, we actually tabled it.
I know you did. Since my appointment back in November of 2013, my reappointments have been riddled with delays on the board's part, uncertainty on my part. I just, I'm starting to get the feeling that I'm not wanted in this position. I've had that feeling for a while, actually. I don't know if any member of the board shares that same feeling, but it just, now I have another uncertainty. I don't know when this is going to happen, if it's going to happen, when it's going to happen.
We'll definitely do it by the 21st.
Okay. The only thing is, I will, I think I'll be out of state on the 21st, but that's, I mean, that's fine. I don't really, I don't have to be here.
Yeah, you don't have to be here for those.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I just...
All right.
23rd or 24th?
21st. 21st today, yeah. All right.
Town Council?
Morning, sir. Good evening.
Good evening.
So I've got, of course, leaving up that right there. Okay, here we go. Number 13 is executive. 14 is executive.
No, I would say 13 and 14 are not executive.
Those are just notifications?
Well, just notifications of filing of a motion to reconsider with the Civil Service Commission, and 14 is just a notification that the scheduled trial date has been put off by the court.
Okay.
And they're going to seek another date.
All right.
15 and 16 would be executive sessions.
I don't know what 17 is, since he's sitting right there.
Right.
Center interim town administrator, but we've met Greg and he's here, so I don't think we have to discuss you anymore. Yeah, yeah. There's contracts all set and everything. New business. 18's not executive, right?
No.
And if I may add to that, I don't know if, I spoke to the owner of that building, and he theoretically has someone buying that bull shooting match, the LLC, and reopening a restaurant there. So the name will remain nameless until they actually come in front of us, but I've been informed that that process is taking place right now for whatever that's worth.
Well, to the extent, I mean, in your packet, I think, is a letter received today, at least I received it today, from the planning board indicating that they have revoked the special permit that was given to the current restaurant to operate.
Okay.
So technically, under the zoning bylaws in the community, without the special permit, the license that's been issued by this board isn't capable of being used at that site in any event.
Yep.
So...
Why did they revoke the special permit?
They revoked the special permit under their finding, apparently, that the site was no longer being operated as a restaurant.
It was abandoned.
Right. So what they've done is indicated that they've revoked the special permit for the current restaurant to operate there. And if and when they wish to reestablish a restaurant at that site, they're going to have to go back before the planning board for another special permit for the new restaurant.
Okay. All right. All right, so that's up to the new owners to do.
It is. The question to the board is whether you wish to leave the current common vittual license that's in place there, just there, or whether to schedule a hearing to rescind.
I think they will be starting over.
Well, let me ask you something. If someone's buying the LLC, would they in fact be buying the common vittual, whatever, you know, common vittuals license?
Well, they're going to have to come in for a transfer.
I know, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, you know, it's one of those things where, I mean, obviously, the planning board acted quickly on this. I can go back into when I first started here, there was another unnamed establishment who kept the license for a long time that was closed, and nothing was ever done to them. And all of a sudden, you know, in this short period of time, all of a sudden, they revoked their special permit, so...
Yeah, I think that the issue with the board is you can leave this license alone, just recognizing that without the special permit, it's not going to be allowed to open, regardless of what the board does.
Right, they have to go before, yeah.
Because of the zoning issues.
Okay. But they have to go before the planning board and get a new special permit.
Right. And then they're going to have to go back to the board and explain how they're changing the operation and what they're doing and your approvals of what's going on.
Would it make sense to have them come in and do that?
I don't think necessarily, until they have it, until they have a license or an approval of a special permit from the planning board, having them come back before you isn't going to help at that point.
Okay. But we don't necessarily have to take the license back?
You don't have to do anything. It's not going to be able to operate.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Through the board?
Mm-hmm.
The thing is, Jim, I just want to get it understanding, that license isn't assigned to the building. It's assigned to the person, right?
It's assigned to the holder of the license, the LLC.
The holder of the license.
Yeah.
So when he abolishes his business, that automatically comes back to the town. It's not assigned to that building.
It's not assigned to the building. It's held, but the term of the license is annual. It's issued in January and runs through December. And if, unlike the liquor licenses, but the food licenses, there's no limit on how long they can be held inactive during that year's period. So they could run, they could hold the license and not operate it between now and December. And the real difference between the two is that you're limited by statute to the amount of, number of liquor licenses that you can issue, but you're not limited as to the number of common vittual licenses you can issue to restaurants to operate. So doing nothing with this doesn't harm any other potential business that might want to operate, where if this were a liquor license establishment, there might be some input.
That's a restaurant, yeah.
But if we gave them a permit through the health department, someone else takes over, we have to go back in there.
Yes. They have to come back through. If they're going to modify, reopen the operation, especially with the work that the planning board has done by revoking the special permit, they've now got to apply for a new license for a special permit, and then they've got to come back here to bring what they're doing there, intending to do there now, into conformity with what was issued by the board in the past, based on a prior presentation to you.
Because I may be wrong, but I thought that a lot of the equipment was gone too, so obviously, that's going to be, they're going to have to get it re-inspected to bring new stuff in, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right. And last thing, procurement officer?
The issue here, I know you've, you've just hired a new, or an interim town administrator. However, the prior-time administrator was the procurement officer for the town side of the business. And currently, a question was raised by the Director of the Department of Public Works when contracts are let that are subject to 30B, who is going to be signing off on behalf of the town as the procurement officer on those contracts? And so I raised that issue here. Now, the state has, the Inspector General's Office has a certification program. There are three facets to it, where you go, take those tests, and you're certified as a procurement officer, which you don't have to have to act as a procurement officer, but it helps the person doing the job to understand the nuances and the technicalities of the situation. And I, in talking with the Director of Public Works, I don't know that the town has anyone on the town side who has been trained in those inspector general programs, but I believe, and I don't know this, but I believe that the schools have a designated assistant or associate procurement officer who operated technically under the auspices of the town administrator as a procurement officer. And it might make some sense to consider...
She just retired.
Hmm?
She just retired. By Terry O'Leary's?
Well, I'm assuming that the school might have a person set to replace her.
Okay.
I don't know that, but if they, the suggestion would be, if the schools have someone who is already trained, that during the interim, until we're able to get someone to be trained or as a procurement officer, to use that school's procurement officer for town business might be helpful, if the school's willing to do it.
Okay.
I don't need a procurement officer, but I have, usually it's your accountant, who is your procurement officer, or an employee. If she's not having, if she's interested in doing it.
If she's interested and if she's qualified, I'm sure, I'm sure she would be.
Well, I think she could probably understand the ramifications of the procedure. The problem, not a problem, but the concern about having the procurement officer be the town accountant, is that in the contracts that are executed on the town side, they're executed by the procurement officer, but then the accountant also has to execute all of the town's contracts that say as to appropriation, and I don't know whether the board would want to have one person doing both of those functions on the contracts. Now, it's sort of a double-check in that aspect, but it is possible.
If I may, I'm asking Mr. Moyer, have you had procurement duties in your past positions?
Many, I'm not saying that I've had many in the past, but I've just designated as a procurement officer. Now, what he's talking about here of having the state certification...
Well, that's not a necessity. It's just something that you can get. But if you've had, I mean, if you've had dealings as a, experience as a procurement officer, then we may...
That's fine. We can maybe work to, you know, work with the requirements. It was just a matter, in the interim, this actually was raised at a point in time where we're still, we're looking for an interim.
Right, right.